We'll call the regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time we have the reading of the minutes of the July 5, 2012 Upsher County Commission meeting.
The county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, July 5, 2012 at 9:00 AM. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, Creed Clatcher Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, William Parker Administrator, and Japhone Danbacher Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Clatcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of June 28, 2012 with the following correction, paragraph number nine. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Clatcher, the commission approved the request to receive funds by direct deposit into the general county fund. Crystal Shaw, Relay for Life Upsher County Representative, appeared before the commission and provided an update/review of the cancer research fundraising activities and support provided by Relay for Life teams in Upsher County. Ms. Shaw reviewed the Relay for Life Month proclamation. The purpose of the proclamation is to recognize cancer survivors, remember cancer victims, and encourage county residents to participate in the fight against cancer. After discussion on motion by Creed Clatcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the Relay for Life Month proclamation, which designates July 2012 as Relay for Life Month in Upsher County. Donnie Tenny provided a review of the comprehensive economic development strategy project priority listing and assignment of local priority points. The listing of projects and priorities remains unchanged from previous week's review and no comments have been received. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Clatcher, the commission approved the listing of the said project with priorities as submitted. Donnie Tenny reviewed the West Virginia Code 7-1-3L, authority to establish county appraisal -assessment board functions and duties of board, duties of assessor. William Parker advised that he had reviewed the code with Helen Phillips, Upsher County Assessor. After discussion, the commission delayed action pending further discussion with Ms. Phillips. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Clatcher, the commission approved the extension of joint opportunities for independence contract and the extension of the community work experience program contract with the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources. Creed Clatcher advised follow-up with Mary Austin, Community Services Manager, to discuss the reason for the reduced number of referrals in recent years. William Parker provided an update on matters relating to contested election petition and response. David D. Taylor, petitioner v. Michael R. Kelly, respondent, is slain as 10-416. Timothy Stranko, Steptoe &amp; Johnson, PLLC, is on today's agenda for a 1:30 meeting as advisor to the commission to review hearing procedures outlined and/or review of research. Area residents presented a petition to keep Michael Kelly on the fall 2012 ballot. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from the office of the governor concerning award of a justice assistant grant of $20,000 for partial funding of a prevention resource officer at Buchanan Upsher Middle School. Number two, copy of correspondence from Kennedy Davidson, Mayor of the City of Buchanan, to Major General James A. Hoyer, Adjutant General of West Virginia Army National Guard, concerning construction of a readiness center. Number three, Upsher County payroll information for this school year 2012-2013. Number four, agendas and notices of meetings as listed. Number five, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number six, meetings as listed. Number seven, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. And the commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission recessed at 10:45 AM. The commission attended a meeting at the emergency operations center concerning the power outage situation. The commission reconvened at 1:15 PM. Representatives from the Palace Valley area appeared before the commission to discuss options concerning a request to change the name of Barkin-Holler Road, a private driveway. Terry Jo Bennett, Assistant Mapping Coordinator, provided a review of E-911 addressing mapping ordinance requirements. The property owners along Barkin-Holler Road are unable to meet the 80% of landowner approval threshold for compliance of the ordinance. The commission advised that a possible solution would be to add landowners by subdividing tracks. Terry Jo Bennett presented a road name request from county resident Caroline Long. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Clatcher, the commission approved Ms. Bennett's recommendation of Deerfield Drive for the private driveway off of Parkway Drive. Terry Jo Bennett advised the commission of a structure on Canyon Road which was incorrectly addressed during the data collection phase of the address and mapping project. No action was taken at this time. The commission requested Ms. Bennett to review the matter with the homeowner and follow up at a future meeting. Timothy Stranko, Steptoe &amp; Johnson, PLLC, did not appear for the scheduled meeting with the commission. William Parker made contact with him by phone. At 1:40 PM on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Clatcher, the commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-13-4. Present with Donnie Tenny, Creed Clatcher, J.C. Rafferty, William Parker, and Timothy Stranko via conference call to discuss matters concerning the contested election petition. David D. Taylor, petitioner v. Michael R. Kelly, respondent, is slain as 10-416. The commission returned to open session at 2:00 PM. No decisions were made in executive session. Conference call with Timothy Stranko continued in open session. Mr. Stranko advised that matters pertaining to the case could not be discussed, however he could take procedural questions. Frank Hartman, attorney for Michael Kelly, requested that action be taken concerning the appointment issue. It's discussed during executive session last week's meeting. Mr. Stranko deferred to William A. Parker, who advised that the matter could not be addressed until it is placed on the agenda in proper format. The commission commended county employees for job performance under difficult circumstances during a current power emergency. Greg Harris, Magnus Department, E-911 Communication Center employees, Office of Emergency Management employees, and Carol Smith, Bookkeeping Department, as well as others who went out of their way to maintain operations. With no further business, on motion by Creed Clatcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission meeting adjourned at 2:45 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes read? While I ask for motion to be approved as such.
Sir, move.
I'll say. On favor say aye. At the same time, motion carries. Okay, our first scheduled appointment is at 1:00, our Upsher County Policy Board meeting with elected officials, and at 2:00 with the Upsher County Department heads and supervising meeting. So we'll move down to items for discussion and possible action. First is review and consider establishment of Upsher County Appraisal Assessment Advisory Board. Mr. Parker was going to do some research and discuss with the assessor and report back to us.
I did review the matter with Ms. Phillips. She would request a meeting with the commission, she, her staff, members that are representatives from the state tax department on the need or purpose of the board and before the commission would take any action.
Well, has she proposed to set up that meeting, or is that something we need to do?
I did not get into that. I would assume, I wanted to find out if you gentlemen wanted it during a Thursday meeting, a special meeting, what you would like before I even approached that subject.
Well, I'd say during Thursday would be good. Basically, she's talking about probably, what, Mr. Knight, you know?
Someone from the staff to question.
Yeah, I don't know if she'll have Jerry Knight here or not, but she's unavailable for today. She has matters to take care of this weekend of a wedding nature, I do believe, so.
She's getting married? I thought she was already married. Anyway, well, why don't we, within the next week or two, then you coordinate with her and get it set for Thursday.
I'll get with her when she gets back next week and try and coordinate that meeting for a Thursday, probably be an afternoon situation.
Will be back in the office till noon. Will not be back in the office till 10:00.
Okay.
You need to know. You may be collecting those.
That won't be a problem. At this point, I.
Well, within the next two or three weeks, I'd say. Next item is consider request from Virgil D. Miller, Sheriff of Upsher County, to employ Michael R. Kelly, Chief Deputy as Process Server slash Bailiff slash Court Security Officer. And this is something that, oh, there's Virgil. Good morning, Virgil.
Already here.
You scared me there.
I don't have my uniform on today. Kind of playing hooky a little bit.
There you go.
But as, I think you have a copy of the letter?
Right.
And says, "In my recommendation to the Upsher County Commission to approve the hiring of Michael R. Kelly as a Process Officer in and for Upsher County, started at a salary of $1,838 per hour, with full benefits and 40 hours a week scheduled period. That's my recommendation, of course, the discussions I've had with Mr. Parker, and I would ask commission act on that today and it could be approved, be taken effect immediately."
Okay, well, that's one issue we discussed with the attorney, so Willie, why don't you?
We've had, after the meeting last week, we had some discussions with Mr. Stranko on a conference call. Some of his concerns or questions on behalf of the commission may have is, you know, it's a position that is not in the budget right now, or at least not in that department's budget. The law enforcement department, as you gentlemen know, is a different, is a number 700 versus process and arrest, which is 702, I do believe, or something. Anyway, it's a different 700 number, under the same constitutional officer, of course, as you gentlemen are aware, but the budget is one of his concerns as the change from when you had, and I explained to him, the budget process when we meet in March and have those meetings with the constitutional officers and finalize the budget. His concern is, you know, the change from March until now and whether there is a business need on behalf of the county to do this, or the need for the position as it relates to, from the employer's side. So his recommendation to, as I understand it, and there's other people here that were participating in that conference call, is he would be hesitant to recommend to the commission to take this action, to approve this request.
Can I address two of the issues you raised, Mr. Parker?
You surely may.
The, let me get his phone on. Some of these ringtones would be appropriate. The budget issue, of course, is an issue, as you're well aware, that it is still under the constitutional office of the sheriff, and procedurally, there is no downfall or no detriment to the commission or to the budget, because we've been making budget requests to the state auditor's office to transfer X amount of funds from law enforcement over to the 702, and it's still in-house. So, you know, there's no issue about money, because that money's already been allocated. First of July, we've started on a new budget. That doesn't change anything. You know, the benefits, money's already set aside for that purpose. And as far as the change, I understand what we would be doing was just Mr. Kelly coming out from under civil service and actually being a non-civil service position, it's not been unusual for county employees to change with different elected officials. We just had one a couple of weeks ago. This is more of an in-house transfer. But as I say, it's coming out from under civil service going into the process, part of the department, process and bail. You know, there's a line I had to set aside for it, and I consider that basically an in-house transfer. But as, you know, the code says, we are co-employers, you and I, and I think it's deemed proper that we discuss this and we go this route. But I wouldn't see an issue either way of why, you know, this is kind of like beating a dead horse here. You know, like I said, it's not unusual, because we've done it in our own department. One example, Mark Davis was to jail. We transferred Mark Davis out of the jail and put him on as a deputy sheriff several years ago. So there's plenty of examples out there that which county is active on in similar matters.
But for the litigation that's pending, would this request be made?
I believe it would be anyway. It's always been my issue, and I think Mr. Parker buried it out over the years, 15 and a half years that I've acted as sheriff, I've pretty well been upfront and forward with the county commission. Any requests of employment or change of employment's been addressed through the county commission. Am I correct, Mr. Parker?
You are correct, yes. You've been above board in dealing with the commission and employment issues, I do believe so, sir. Well, one of the, you know, one of the concerns that our counsel had, and outside of the current situation, is a little bit real, back to what Virgil said, is we have done this in the past, from one constitutional officer to another, when there's been a vacancy that has occurred and somebody, someone just transferred from the assessor's office to the county clerk's office, back to, and they previously transferred from the county clerks to the assessor, so they transfer back after a number of years, four or five years. That has happened in the past. Usually, it's, and it's agreeable, it has to be agreeable with both constitutional officers, of course, before that can take place. That's a little, you know, this situation, we only have one, as I previously said, but the situation is creating a precedent, and this situation is possibly a little bit different than what we've done in the past, and looking at that is, you know, from a civil service to a non-civil service position as it relates to election matters, is some of the, you know, issues involved or behind the request, but.
Well, technically, he's the chief deputy. He is non-civil service, his point, has not been for seven and a half years.
I understand that point of view. There is a different point of view, because the chief deputies in the past number of years have received civil service longevity pay, as well as civil service vacation according to the civil service schedule, so that line may have been blurred a little bit.
But if you look at any employment training I have ever been to, and there has been a few, they always have addressed the issue, whether it's been state level or the federal level, that if there is a benefit, it is one that is most advantageous to the employee. You always give the employee that benefit.
I understand.
Correct?
A lot of courts have that interpretation, yes. In my experience as a school board member, that is routinely the case in 18 or 18A in that court, you know, in situations, in those employment situations. In the Civil Service Code, as I remember, if I remember correctly, the chief deputy's position is mentioned in Article or Section 1, and not mentioned in any other section other than the employment and promotion and protection of jobs, which does not have, I mean.
When if I may, if I may, courts, in the section that Willie refers to.
Why don't you come up here, Frank?
It expressly does. Frank Hartman on behalf of Mike Kelly. The section that you're referring to, Willie, specifically exempts chief deputy. It says, "Except Chief Deputy," blah, 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 and then goes on and says, "This is the article." That's specifically why the chief deputy is in fact exempt. And I appreciate what you're saying as far as, because they've had benefits conferred upon them that may arguably be civil service benefits, it does not create, it does not trump the statute and does not make him civil service. He's a non-civil service person going to another non-civil service position that is being requested. Now, Virgil can talk to you about the trainings and things of that nature, I don't know, and he knows the needs of the office better than I, but as far as that civil, the exemption to civil service, the West Virginia Code exempts him from civil service. Sorry for the interruption.
Would this, would this transfer then, in reality, be taking a deputy off the streets and putting them in a, reducing your deputy force and increasing your bailiff slash?
Process.
Yeah, I mean, that, that could be a concern there, I think, as far as public safety, is if you're actually removing, reducing your force of deputies and increasing your bailiff and court security.
We have deputies doing those duties right now.
What would that, come up a little closer there. He can't see, Dennis can't see you back there, Virgil, or getting reflection or something, I'm not sure what, but, so, oh, he can't hear. How many hours, how many hours are deputies doing bailiff work in court, security type work?
We routinely, we run about 110, 120 hours a month in court.
The deputy, just the deputy?
Well, I'm told, overall.
Overall.
Overall. I don't have that number here in front of me. You know, I routinely handle circuit court, Richard Moore will cover, you know, family court, and then whoever's working on the road takes care of the process.
And so, Mr. Tenny, I'd argue, I mean, Virgil knows the hours better than I do, and the numbers better than I do, and I appreciate your point that you're pulling people off of street duty in order to make room for process serving or court security, but you're already in that position, arguably, so you're pulling people off the street right now to handle those duties in court. It's revenue neutral to the county and sort of man-hours neutral or negligible at best. That works.
One of the other factors that I was sitting here thinking of, and I haven't had a chance to explore this, because I just didn't think of it at the time, is it would relate to some of the federal grants we have currently in place, pro-officers, the one that's in place, the one that's upcoming, that has been partially awarded. I'd have to check the language of those grants, but fairly certain of their requirement that, or restriction, that you cannot supplant local funds with federal grant dollars. Not, I won't say every, 99.9% of federal grants have that stipulation. That possibly could be seen as supplanting local dollars with federal dollars if you have a reduction in force from a certified law enforcement number standpoint. Someone, Bean Counter in DC may take that.
You're talking about two different situations. You're talking about the chief deputy's position, but then you're talking about, we're moving CJ Day to the middle school, which we're going backfill that position.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that is, I assume we have 10 right now. I think that's, I think we have 10 certified law enforcement officers. If, and we have one grant currently in place, and as Sheriff Miller said, we have another grant that was awarded, or at least partial grant for the position.
Right.
And so we'll be filling Mr. Day's position when he assumes a pro-officer, so that'll be a wash. If we have a reduction in force, or a reduction in numbers of certified law enforcement officers, the argument could be made, don't know if it'd be, but it could be made, that you're supplanting local funds with federal dollars as a result of that, you know, reduction in overall numbers.
Overall numbers will stay the same, because you're removing one of the middle school, replacing him, so.
Hey, I'm, I'm saying if the commission would approve your request, they're removing Mr. Kelly from the certified law, unless you're planning on replacing, you know, which you've said.
We're replacing CJ's slot.
Yeah, I understand that.
So total numbers will stay the same.
But we're moving money.
Where it should have been increased by one.
We're moving money from the 700 budget area where those grant funds come into, whatever that number is, $800,000, $900, whatever that number is, we'll be moving those dollars from that department to another department, and those grant funds come into that 700 area, supplement the 700 area, and, you know, the question is, you know, Bean Counter in DC somewhere, would they make the argument that you're supplanting local funds with federal dollars by reducing your?
Yeah, but we treat it as a quarterly reimbursement. It's actually a Board of Education's grant.
Yes, I understand it's, well, it's a, the board supplements the grant, the grant actually comes through the commission, so the board has to supplement the grant.
Which I assume they're going.
For the position, yeah. It's another factor I hadn't thought of until this setting here.
Has that happened in the past, Willie? Has that incident occurred where you've swapped employees in a similar manner within the department? I think Mark Davis was one example, creating some ebb and flow over these budgetary, has the federal, have these grant authorities ever been back and said, "Hey, you're supplementing our dollars or yours?"
No, we've never had a finding on that or through the auditor's office. We've never had a finding. Of course, you know, the situation, and that was a number of years ago on Mr. Davis, he would have been moving in department and we would have been increasing that budget. So you can increase a budget for federal dollars with no problems.
But this, this exact thing was done 12 years ago, where the chief deputy was removed and made a process officer within a department, under Mr. Bax's administration, if I remember correctly.
I, I know that chief deputy was moved, I have to research that.
And he wasn't, he placed in the process officer's position?
He may have been, I do not remember.
Yeah, I, I think I'm right.
Yeah, I wouldn't bet against it.
Is there any situation like this where basically what you're, you're doing is adding to the staff of the court security, that position, that type of work? Is there any requirement, Willie, of doing the advertising, or can you move people without any kind of public advertisement?
To my knowledge, there's no statutory requirement on, outside of civil service deputies, there's no statutory requirement that a county commissioner or a constitutional officer advertise a position. We do have in our personnel guideline procedures the requirement of advertising for a position. In the past, and we had this discussion last week, is we have made moves between offices. For example, the most recent that I remember from the assessor's office to the county clerk's office, and then the assessor posted the position. The county clerk's office did not post the position, it was just a lateral move. So we have done lateral moves from one office to another office without posting the position and then posting the vacancy, similar to what a school system does when the seniority, when people bump on seniority, they go through the process and they, they're post, but seniority takes it and then the vacancy is filled. But to my knowledge, there's no. But to my knowledge, there's no statutory requirement that a county commission post a position or a constitutional officer, other than deputy sheriff's civil service positions. Now, there is, let me correct that. Had the discussion with the assessor last week. The Property Valuation and Training Commission, which oversees the valuation fund, does have some requirements for posting positions before they will approve the hiring, which does not, as you gentlemen are aware, we, you do not have the advice and consent on the valuation fund employees, employees that are paid from the valuation fund. But the Property Valuation Training Commission, I did learn within the past two weeks that they have requirements that an assessor must go through a competitive posting process before they will approve the hiring.
And that may be because you don't have that joint employer?
Well, there's, to my knowledge, there's been, in a discussion with Ms. Phillips, there's been some other counties that had problems of employing relatives, close friends, without a competitive situation, and the Property Valuation Training Commission put that step in to stop that practice.
Well, I think, I think where this, where this particular request differs from the others is the fact of we're in litigation. I guess, my, my concern is, and, you know, I know you've had discussion more, Willie, than we have with the attorney on this particular situation, is whether that puts us in a position that we don't want to be in because of the present situation. I mean, have you discussed that thoroughly with him?
I, I think I am 100% correct in relaying the attorney's recommendation, council's recommendation. He would not recommend approval from the county commission for this, for this request, based on numerous factors.
Okay, we have the attorney's recommendation, and what's your recommendation?
My recommendation? I would be hesitant to approve this request based on the current situation that we have in process. I understand there may be a need, we may be pseudo-doing this right now with certified law enforcement officers. I would be hesitant based on the grants we have in place and supplanting federal dollars or local funds with federal dollars. I have a concern in that area and reducing the 700 budget with grants that are coming in. When, gee, I'd have to check 12 years ago, I don't remember, but Sheriff Baxa was not as successful in obtaining grants as Sheriff Miller has been. So we may have not had federal grant dollars in place at that time, I do not know.
I can answer that question.
You've been much more successful in grants than, than, than some past sheriffs.
So this is my penalty for being successful.
I thought I set you up pretty good with that, Virgil, you know? But, so that, that would be one factor I would have in making that recommendation, to be cautious.
Frank, did you have something?
I do, Mr. Commissioner, after, after your comment, I'm just, I'm, what it appears the direction that the commission is heading, I suppose I'm a bit premature, I should wait for your vote and then ask for your reasons why you've denied it. But it appears that you're heading that direction. And what concerns me is, is that, that there now is conferred a benefit by an election challenge, that ordinarily, and in fact, in the past, you have precedent for approving such transfers. But if, but for this litigation, you, you might be inclined to do so. So there, so the election challenge now has, has damaged my client. By, by being the recipient of an election challenge, he now cannot obtain gainful employment within this county that the county has in previous situations, in very similar situations, approved. That the budgetary issues and the transfers and the methodology for that are all above board and can be done with the state auditor's office and are commonly done. So there's precedent for doing this, yet you're not going to do it because of the litigation. I guess I want to know, on behalf of my client, why, what your reasons and what your rationale are for, for denying the request? And when's the last time that this body denied a request from the sheriff or anybody else's office on these interdepartment transfers? Apparently there was one done between two different departments very recently. I'd, I'd like to hear the rationale for the decision, please. I guess I should wait for you to decide.
My rationale is, you can spin it any way you want to. If it weren't for the litigation, we wouldn't be having this conversation at all. We wouldn't be having this conversation.
Well, I think on behalf of the sheriff, he would, he still feels there's a need for these positions, that you've got one person doing two jobs that can't do it adequately and that you're borrowing deputies from it. Now, would Mr. Kelly be the candidate for that job but for the litigation? Probably not. You're probably right about that. But that's the situation in which we find ourselves. So in, in, in your desire to be fair to Mr. Taylor, and I do appreciate that, and I think you should be commended for that, and you've tried very hard to be above board and be very straightforward with everybody throughout this process, you in turn are then being unfair to my client.
One of the things, if I could interject here, setting aside the current litigation or contested election.
And I think we should. I think this is a separate matter.
I would tend to agree with that in, up to a certain point. I still have a, that being aside, if this matter came and we were moving Chief Deputy Kelly or another deputy from 700 to a 702 department, I, I have a concern of the grant, federal grant dollars that are involved of supplanting local funds with federal dollars. I think that is, that is a major concern of, or factor in my recommendation to be, to the commission to be cautious in approving as such.
And have you looked into that?
I have, no.
And we've known about this for approximately three weeks. I mean, this isn't a surprise request.
I, I understand that, it's just, I did not think of that until, until we were sitting here discussing, discussing budget transfers, but I'm 99.9% certain that would be an issue, or could be an issue, with the, with the grant dollars. Now, I understand the concern of, but it's, I don't think it's the commission's intent, you know, to be treating Mr. Taylor more favorable than your client or adverse employment reactions, however we, you know, need to phrase that. This situation is not the making of the employer. The situation is not the making of the employer of, A, who ran for sheriff, who contested the election, or anything that happened in those regards, you know, who requested the opinions or advisory opinions. The employer's trying to deal with the cards they've been dealt. It's, so I want to be very cautious of setting up, you know, I'm not saying that you are Mr. Hartman at all, but adverse employment reaction claims for the future, for anybody. That's not, the commission is not doing that, has not done that. It's not their making.
And I appreciate that, but the fact remains, at least the, the discussions here today on the record have been that, in the past, this has been done, that, that but for the election contest, this, this might be considered. That somehow the election contest has put us into, to a different position. This is routinely done, the sheriff's done it before. You don't turn his requests down, you don't return the requests down of other agencies, and now that's where we are.
There have been employment recommendations that have been turned down in the past. Maybe not these, definitely not these exact circumstances, but I know Sheriff Miller made one numerous years ago, a number of years ago, that the commission at that time did not approve.
Well, has there been a transfer like this, an interdepartmental transfer that's been denied?
Not at the commission level that I can think. There, there have been employees that have applied for positions in other departments, and the constitutional officer did not make that recommendation, so. But they didn't make the recommendation to the commission. So there's, I cannot think of one that's come to the commission level that's been denied.
Virgil, let me ask you a question. I, I understand when you're talking about the total hours that's spent, involved monthly on.
Court.
On process server, bailiff, and court security officer. What would be the total number of hours of all people involved in those, not counting your, since your salary? I mean.
Well, that's the total number of hours, when I ballpark it 100 to 120 hours.
That's for everything?
That's magistrate court, family court, service.
Okay, okay, and that, are those, Rich, is that basically, he does all three of those?
When, but numerous times we have both courts, maybe all three.
I understand, yeah, you've got three courts running at the same time.
He's the primary bailiff.
One person can't be in three different places.
He's the primary bailiff.
Right. But I guess.
And then usually that's backfilled by myself or Rodney Robinson, the majority of the time.
So the, the time that he's not doing that, then what, what's he, what's he?
Could be moving prisoners, you know, he, he helps transport prisoners.
Anything that a non-certified law enforcement officer wants to do?
Well, we're not tying one of them up, doing that, freeing them up, yeah. Or, you know, out-serving process.
Well, and that's still.
And his hours are usually run, you know, he'll run anywhere between 40 and 48 hours a week, Richardson.
So if this transfer were made, then would Mike still, some of the time, be doing what he's doing now?
He wouldn't have the arrest powers.
He wouldn't have the arrest power?
He'd be transferring prisoners, handling prisoners, court security, you know, serving process.
So that, that, irregardless of all these other circumstances, would be a concern of mine, that we're, we're actually reducing his ability, broad scope wise, to, of what he can do by moving him into this position? Because as a certified law enforcement officer, he can bailiff, he can do process and serve, he can still go out and arrest people.
That's correct.
If we transfer him, then we're limiting him to what he can do outside the scope. We're limiting what he can do as a, as an officer, a deputy of certified law enforcement officer.
That is correct.
Now, that would be a concern of mine, irregardless of all this other stuff. Because we're moving someone in a position that we're actually limiting their ability to serve the public, whereas if they're a certified law enforcement officer, they can move in there and do bailiff and then still go back and, that, that would be, that would be probably the biggest concern I have.
Well, Mr. Teddy, I understand what you're saying, but we have one of two options. We either put him in this position or we don't have anybody in that position, period. So thereby, you're talking about the safety of the community, we're going to eliminate an officer altogether.
But if you move him, you're going to eliminate an officer altogether as far as arrest power?
As far as arrest powers. But if we don't, there's a vacancy.
Again, on behalf of the commission and the employer, that's not a situation they're deciding.
No, Mr. Teddy raised the issue.
I understand, but they're not doing that. You know, the employer, nor, nor are you, nor is the sheriff. I mean, outside of Chief Deputy Kelly, we could have Deputy XYZ walk in here today or tomorrow and say, I'm going to work for the federal system, I'm, I'm done, I'm, thank you very much, Upsher County. That's their decision to make. That's nothing the employer did or the sheriff did.
I'm in response to Mr. Teddy's question.
I understand.
In response to you, I mean, it's a reasonable accommodation that the commission is refusing to make. So, and I appreciate your concern that you're worried about an employment case. I'm putting it back, back in that direction. It's a reasonable accommodation that the county is unwilling to make and refusing to make.
But the employer, you know, since we're at that area again, the employer's not making that decision. The employee has, has options available.
And this is an option.
And this is an option that's put forth, you know, there. But there's other options available to continue employment or, you know.
Or.
Withdraw from the ballot.
But I thought this didn't have anything to do with the ballot?
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying the employees' options. I'm saying the employees' options.
We argue around the issue.
The employees' options.
We argue around the issue, but that, the litigation is the 800-pound gorilla that's present in this room. And for us, as a body, to make a decision requires us certainly to listen to your argument on behalf of Deputy Kelly. But we also have retained an attorney who's giving us advice on how we, as a body, should make decisions and what basis of law he interprets to make decisions. I know, Frank, that if you were representing us, you would give us the best legal advice that you could, as you are doing with Mike. This is a very difficult, and to a degree, it's, it's very stressful for all parties' concern. So from my perspective, whatever decision in this body that I made, I have to be willing to live with. I have to be willing to look at people in the county and say that I've made that best decision. Not for Mike, not for me, not for Mr. Taylor, but for the county. And concerned with future litigation, future exposure that we may open ourselves up to, depending whatever decision we do make. And knowing full well that whatever decision we do make, at least I believe from here, will not be the final decision. Whatever decision we make will be most likely appeal regardless.
Oh, you mean on this employment issue or?
No, no, on the.
On the election contest we're not talking about? Okay.
But they're so intertwined, you cannot separate them, in my opinion. You cannot separate them, they're so intertwined, that you can't separate one issue from the other, as much as you ideally might wish to.
Creed, do you have anything else?
That's all.
So gentlemen, are we ready to make a decision?
I was going to say, I have no thing else.
You have anything else, Frank? Okay, so the.
We want to, we want to go into executive session to discuss with the attorney any more details that have come up here as a result of Mr. Hartman's and Sheriff Miller's statements to the commission. So assuming our attorney is available.
I haven't made that contact, just to cross on the commission under West Virginia Code 698-4. If the employee or public employee wants it in open session, it must be an open session, so. I don't know what that request is or council's request is, so I would be cautious in that regard.
Well, if, if the attorney's advice to us is that we deny this request, I mean, that's from a legal perspective, and, and I think if we're going to pay somebody to give us an opinion, then that should bear on our decision. Willie's concerned about, you know, this whole thing brought, is brought about with federal grant money. So, and we see what the consequences are of not following exactly what the, the federal government tells you have to do if you receive grant money. So I think that validates Willie's concern in, in doing this because of the, the federal grant money involved. So at this point, I think we should just go ahead and vote, and the request is to employ Michael Kelly as chief deputy, as process server, bailiff, court security officer. So that's a request from the sheriff. So I would ask for a motion, since that's what the request is, and then, and then the commission will vote on that, but, but the, the motion should be to employ him. So I'd ask for that motion, then we'll vote yes or no on it.
Or your commission could take, you know, if there's no action on behalf of the commission, then it dies for lack of a motion and the request would be denied. So you would not have to make a motion and vote one way or the other. You could.
It was a moot point.
Yeah. You could say the commission, if that's the general consensus of the commission, you can proceed however the majority of the commission desires.
Well, the end result's going to be the same. Well, the end result's going to be the same, just a matter of whether we, we let it die or we actually vote on it, settle the issue. And I think maybe time-wise, today's an important deadline as far as this decision. So what's the, what's the will of the commission? Do you want to vote on it, or do you want to, you want to move on to the next item? Well, I'll just ask for a motion, if we don't get one, then we'll know what the answer is, how's that? Do we have a motion to approve the request made by the sheriff? We don't have a motion, so it's, it's, it's a dead issue, okay. Next, next item is termination appointment of Shauna M. McLean, 911 dispatcher, is of June 29th, 2012. So we're losing another dispatcher.
If we could take a break, I think we have some people that need to leave as in cameras recording, so that would give him a chance to.
You need to leave, Dennis?
Yeah, that would give him a chance to pack up, if we could take a break.
Okay, well, let's take a, let's take a five-minute recess.